Hey, John.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Hi, John.
Goodbye. Even it, everybody. Okay, so go ahead and call, we're early for the council meeting, but we just have a town meeting, so we'll call the town meeting to order, and then we have to elect a moderator.
And nominate Mayor Mark Kozinski as moderator.
Second. Any other nominations? nominations? Favor? Okay, so eligibility to vote, any person who has been elected over such town and any citizen of the United States of the age 18 years or more who is separately who was liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed ground list of such town, reference Connecticut general statutes, section 7.8, can vote, 7.6, and legal notice.
Such a town meeting, electors and citizens qualified for voting town meetings, the town of Berlin will be held at Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, on Tuesday, June 15, 2021, at 6:45 PM for the following purposes: For proof in FY22 non-budget appropriation of $2,210,640 out to the general fund on assigned fund balance to the pension act account, both in the general fund. Number two, the purpose of voting to accept a non-budget appropriation of the state of Connecticut Youth Services grant in the amount of $189 for deposit in the child and youth services revenue account, appropriate these funds to the youth grant expenditure account, subject to the approval by the board of finance.
Okay, thank you. So now we have a, we have a resolution, resolution for the town meeting.
Yeah, both?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that resolution number one resolved at a non-budget appropriation of $2,210,640, as requested by the town manager, in accordance with section 7-11 of the Berlin Town Charter, appropriated from the general fund, assigned fund balance to the pension actuarial account, both in the general fund.
Thank you, second on that. Sorry, thank you. Okay, so discussion on the resolution, do we have any discussion? Anyone? This was explained to us at the last meeting. Hearing no discussion from anyone, and then take a vote on this resolution that we just mentioned, so all those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay, the resolution is accepted, and we'll go ahead and adjourn this town meeting at this time. And we have about 10, about 10 minutes, it will go less for our regular meeting. No, that's later. Oh, the second, oh, you didn't do the second one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What?
I'm sorry, all right, I'm just, I wasn't in a hurry.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, resolution number two, I'll make a motion resolved at a non-budget appropriation of the state of Connecticut Youth Services grant in the amount of $189, as requested by the town manager, in accordance with the section 7-11 of the Berlin Town Charter, be appropriated for a deposit in child and youth services revenue account, appropriate those funds to the youth grant expenditure account, subject to approval by the board of finance.
Thank you, second on that, second. Thank you. Any discussion on this resolution? Anyone? Hearing none, go ahead and take a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Closed? All right, resolution is passed, now we'll adjourn the meeting. And we'll take a short recess till our 7 o'clock town council meeting. All right, we're going to go ahead and call this town council meeting to order, and we can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All call?
Counselor Yelich, here. Nate Kozinski?
Here.
Counselor LeDdy?
Here.
Counselor Teyanessa?
Here.
Counselor Russell?
Here.
Counselor Irenaga?
Here.
Counselor Veach?
Here.
Mary Hapcorn?
Thank you. So now we have our, oh, we're going to do, I was going to do this after the, let's, I'm just going to, can we just do the audience of citizens first? And we'll go ahead and do our audience of citizens, and we've got a couple proclamations. So now it's time for our audience of citizens, if anyone either on Zoom or in person wants to address the council on any issue in town, now would be your time, anything on the agenda? Come up to the podium, just your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Susan Quasnewsee, 1111 Kensington Room, briefly about bicentennial park and the upcoming leash ordinance. Dear council members, bicentennial park is part of a nearly 500 acre open space that has allowed dogs to be off leash as long as they're under, under control for over 45 years. The town ordinance committee will soon be voted to change the leash ordinance townwide, which will blanket bicentennial park, meaning that we can now be ticketed for having our dogs off leash in this park. We do not want to break the law, we only wish to be allowed to continue to use this park as we always have. We ask the town ordinance committee and the town council to exempt bicentennial park from being in town by the leash ordinance that will blanket bicentennial park attached as a petition with 397 signatures from people who support this request, please, councilors, Mr. Mayor, except bicentennial park, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great, next.
Hi, my name is Danielle Morrissey Corsetti, and I live at 75 Cotton Street in East Berlin, Connecticut. I just wanted to say that later on, the town manager is going to raise a request I made to hang the progress pride flag from the town hall by pole for the last week of June in celebration of LGBTQ pride month, and I think that, like many or even most towns in our area, it's a simple and small statement of acceptance and welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Anyone else? Audience of citizens? Okay, hearing none, go ahead and close the audience of citizens, and so I have two proclamations to read. Let me read the first one, then I'll just make a motion to add the second one. First one is regarding the 25th anniversary of the Central Connecticut Health District. This month, the Central Connecticut Health District opened Berlin as a park, marked 25 years of service to its member towns as a regional local health department. In 1996, the towns of Rocky Hill, Weathersfield voted to reform the Weathersfield-Rocky Hill Health District to provide public health and environmental health services to its communities. Town of Berlin joined the Health District in 1998, at which time its name was changed to the Central Connecticut Health District, and later the town of Newington joined in 2006. The Central Connecticut Health District has provided high-quality public health service to its member towns throughout its 25-year history, and this anniversary gives the town of Berlin an opportunity to recognize the Central Connecticut Health District, its board, director, staff, and volunteers for this service in making our communities safer and healthier, be it through tracking infectious disease outbreaks, providing mass vaccinations, preparing for and responding to natural disasters, or assuring safe food and drinking water. I encourage all citizens to join in this celebration, and in acknowledging the critical role the Central Connecticut Health District has played over the last 25 years in help, helping keep our communities to achieve and maintain good health. Day to day, signed by myself. Thank you on that, and we have a second proclamation, we can just add that to the agenda?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to add to the agenda, the proclamation for the LGBTQ pride month.
Thank you. So a proclamation hereby number one, the town of Berlin hereby recognizes LGBTQ pride month, the town of Berlin recognizes that June is celebrated nationwide as the LGBTQ pride month, and that our great nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all. As a community, Berlin is inclusive and strives for diversity. We welcome all people and believe everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gender identity or sexual orientation. The town of Berlin is hereby proclaim June 2021 as pride month to honor and celebrate our LGBTQ citizens. Let us, as a community, continue to build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance for all, day to day, day by myself, town council. Okay, so put that on to our consent agenda?
Danielle, were you going to recommend the Central Health District here?
Oh, sure, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes, and yes, I apologize for that, sorry about that.
I'm ready.
So Pat Checo is the chair, and Ray Drayma and myself are the representatives for Berlin for you at the health district level, and their office has been moved to the Silvestine Highway, so when anyone needs sewer and sanitary and things like that, then they go see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to Berlin for being a good partner over the many years, and while I was here during those discussions, I was here as the opposition because I was the director of health of Bristol-Burlington, trying to get you to join us.
So work that out.
So I think you, I think we have done well by you, and we've certainly done well by having you with us, we thank you for this, I think last year has been an experience none of us will ever forget, and we thank all of you. I think, as you know, and, and as the town manager knows, our director of health was everywhere at all times, 24 hours a day. Superintendents also called him 24 hours a day, and he met with you guys at least once a, once a week, so it's been a trying time, and it's certainly an experience none of us ever want to go through again, but I think it just shows how important it is to, to have a good health department, and we're pleased to have you in the district, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I think perhaps the lady there.
That's what I was just going to say. Yeah, right. I don't know.
Thanks.
Well, we could keep this, you know, a town hall, or put it somewhere upstairs. Not easy for us to get out of here either, almost hazardous getting out of here. Okay, thank you all. Okay, so turn this on to our consent agenda. We have three items, accept non-budget appropriation of the state Connecticut Youth Services grant in the amount of $189 for deposit in the child and youth services revenue account, and appropriate those funds to the youth grant expenditure account, that's for youth services, accept monetary donations totaling $305 for the Berlin Peck Memorial Library, deposit $305 into the funds of the library, this latest account, and move to accept the donation to the individual with an estimated value of $3 to be used as a summer reading prize, and move to accept the donation of material with an estimated value of $20 to be used for crafts. The third consent agenda is approve permission for consumption of alcoholic beverages, charge of fee for the Sage Park Pavilion, or the Ectomindell and Patel family picnic for approximately 80 people of all ages on Sunday, July 4th, or the Rangate of Monday, July 8th, and they can serve a meal there, and there will be insurance provided, so those are our three consent agenda items. I'll review them, add them ahead of time, take a, take a vote.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I think that date.
The date?
People, that zoo, that, that dogs, and then that Danielle who sent the, the pride thing to Oros, to, like.
My fourth is, I think, I would say that it's supposed to be.
Rangate should be the fifth?
Yes.
Okay, so, so correct it here, correct it in our motion. Thank you, Kate, so we'll go ahead and take a motion on the consent agenda?
We'll make a motion to accept the three consent agenda items, the correction on item number three, four, July 5th.
All right, thank you, second on that, second. Thank you, any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed? All right, motion carries, thank you. Now we have a, just another brief public hearing, some different stuff going on tonight, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Notice is given, hereby given that the town of Berlin will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 15th, at 7:00 PM to discuss the 2021 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act tax credit, tax credit program, and to solicit citizen input, the meeting can also be accessed via Zoom, please refer to the town website for more information regarding the link. Oros, if you could just maybe give us a short briefing on this for the, for the public?
Yeah, sure, so the enabled assistance act, executive program, we have come, council each year, and it allows nonprofits to apply for grants, and the program is paid for through tax credits by operations. So this year, the Prudence Crandall Center submitted two proposals, and both of them, one has to do with the energy efficiency project, and then there's another one that had to do the previous one.
Your annual appeal?
Yeah, it was in the agenda, I had to get that out.
It's for the annual appeal in the ADN programs to serve wealthy income people?
That's correct. So both these programs have been application, has been impacted, the material submitted, it was last time as well, and this time we are seeking approval of the comment at this point, and approval later from the town council.
Okay, thanks, Oros, yeah, we've done this before, and the Prudence Crandall Center has been recipient of these funds before, and so this is a public hearing, so anybody in the public have any comments on this? Now, now would be your time. Council members, anyone? Good. We're the claws, as we have on the past, so I will, before I close the public meeting, so all this information will be included, included in the minutes, you know, so we'll have that on the record, and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we're going to take a vote on it in a few minutes. And we'll go on to our new business.
All right, the first item on the agenda, the appropriate, we need 29106940, fiscal year 2022 general fund on assigned fund balance to fund anticipated unbenefit pension payouts. Kevin Delay, finance director, is available.
Okay.
Good evening. This has become, I think, an annual exercise for us. As part of the budget process, the actuary, our independent actuaries determine the required pension contribution. During the budget process, the Board of Finance elected to fund within the adopted budget only that amount that is required to cover the monthly annuity payouts as well as fees, and ask that I return to request a non-budget appropriation when it becomes necessary. At the end of May, a long-tenured police officer elected to retire, and with that retirement, when we make the final payment, we will only have $200,000 available in the defined benefit plan. We've had four different additional officers request their calculations, so no one has filed paperwork, but we wouldn't be able to fund any one of them. This request would appropriate the funds just to meet the actual determined contribution. It is possible, should three or more of those individuals who have asked for their numbers retire, that I will return to you later in the year, but at this point, this is just a request up to the actual determined contribution and continue funding our pay-as-you-go strategy. And I'll just comment one last thing, that with this most recent retirement, it leaves seven active members in the plan, so since 2016, when we started with 17 members and began the active pay-as-you-go strategy, we've been able now to pay out 10 individuals, the liabilities are gone, and we are effectively executing the strategy.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, we've been dealing with this for a while. So this is what happens, folks, when a town over, don't blame anyone in particular, just over 20 years did not fund the pension program properly, and when they went to a 401K-type program, I think probably 20 years ago, Kevin, right, or more?
Correct.
Yeah, the people that were left in it, in the defined benefit, in the pension side, had another option, which, which was to get some payment upon retirement, so obviously if it was a annuity payment, you know, it would be a little bit easier for the town to cover, but having nothing been put, there was many years that nothing was put into the pension fund, which is a not, not good fiscal policy, so once these remaining employees are paid out, we will have a much better balance sheet in our, in our pension for 401K, so it's a little bit different now, much better balance in our, in all of our town finances, so just trying to clean this up from years of, again, not contributing, which is, you know, move past that, which is a good thing for everyone. So any questions on this from anyone? Council? No? Okay, go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to appropriate $2,210,640 of fiscal year 22 general fund on assigned fund balance to the pension actuarial funding account within the general fund to fund anticipated DB pension payout and the approval of board of finance.
Second on that, second. Thank you, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. The second item, which enables assistance act, actually the program, the one that we just had the hearing.
Yes, so we just, yeah, we just have the explanation for this, so go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I will move to affirm prior support proposals from the Prudence Crandall Center for the 2021 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program.
Second on that, second. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Closed? Motion carries. Three?
Great, thank you. Tonight, number three is the approval of Eagle Scout Project and cooking station elements at Sage Park Pavilion. We have Ross here, want to say something?
Hello, thank you for having me today.
Thanks for being here.
So my name's Matthew Ross, and I'm Eagle Scout, or Eagle Scout candidate in 244 in Berlin, and I'm currently in 10th grade, and I'm looking to conduct an Eagle project at Sage Park Pavilion. So my troupe is one of many who use the pavilion, and I think it'll be really beneficial. So at the pavilion, I'm looking to build two, three tables and a brick structure. So the tables, there will be one eight, sorry, there'll be one eight-foot-long table and two seven-foot-long tables, and they will both be two feet wide, and those will mainly be used for serving, and the brick structure will be a fire pit, and it'll be two fire pits, it'll be 11 feet long, or feet wide, and two feet tall, and that'll be used for cooking the food, and then the tables will be used for serving it. The estimated cost of the fire pit would be $2,500, and the estimated cost of the tables, all three of them together, would be, or the, the two seven-foot tables would be $325, and the eight-foot table would be $225, and I will be fundraising for all of this.
Great, well, thank you, Matt, we always appreciate the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, you other organizations always come forward with some great projects, and it's a great, you know, community tool and teaching for our young people to give back to their community, and we certainly appreciate this project, as we have all of them, they've done some great stuff, bridges over, you know, streams at bicentennial, they rebuilt some at the Berlin Fair one year, just many, many different projects, so we appreciate it, appreciate your effort, and look forward to the new cooking area. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck.
So. Matt, it's gonna be a great addition to Sage Park, thanks so much for your help.
Tonight, number four.
We'll take a motion to approve. Well, I think I'm, I don't know, I'm very, for some reason, it's a nice day outside, it's not raining, I'm not sure.
And Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Eagle Scout Project, to approve cooking station and elements at Sage Park Pavilion, constructed by constructing brick cooking structure and three wooden tables.
Second on that, I second, yeah. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Closed? All right, so moved. Thanks again, Matt.
That will be moved to, it's in there at number four.
So it should have a revised.
Yes.
Yeah. We will revise one.
And this is just by the line from the American Rescue Plan Act. Eric, it's kind of, I can direct up the libraries available to give you a brief background.
Yes, so the Berlin Peck Memorial Library would like to authorize to apply for a grant to the American Rescue Plan Act to help the Berlin community respond directly to the pandemic. The library has been allotted $18,002 through the grant, every library in the state has received an allotment based on a formula for state aid grants. There are strict parameters, which, what could be purchased with this grant, and submitted kind of a first draft to the state library, they come back with some suggestions, and our new director started yesterday, so I'm working on finalizing what we would like to purchase. So I'm working for on finalizing what we would like to purchase.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's right, your new director started, right?
Yes, yesterday.
Ms. McNally?
She is, a library board meeting tonight.
Okay. So I just, while we're talking about the library, do you have her, you know, she starts, like she started yesterday, right? So I just, she's, just a little bit about Ms. McNally, she's at the other meeting, but she served, before she joined us, she served as the Assistant Library Director at the Durham Public Library, Branch Manager of the Ground Community Library and Fort Vancouver Regional Library in Vancouver, Washington. She brings over nine years of management experience through her Berlin Peck Library. You know, a lot of different strengths, developing staff, coordinating community partnerships, providing education and outreach. She has expertise in implementing facilities plans, managing projects and budgets. And prior, prior to her career with life in the library, she was Marketing Director in two commercial real estate companies. She has a bachelor's degree in creative writing at Florida State University and a master's in library and informational science at the University of South Florida. And she currently serves as a trustee in the Connecticut Library Consortium Board. So just wanna welcome her and thank Carrie for doing a great job as the acting director and before we, Ms. McNally, so thank you for helping out, appreciate it. And I'm sure being there for, for Ms. McNally to help her through her transition, so thanks a lot. Okay, so we have a, take a motion.
Two motions here, so first one, I move to approve the Berlin Peck Memorial Library applying for a grant through the American Rescue Plan Act to fund an outdoor extension of our library, which will allow digital inclusion, safe pandemic response, implementation of public health protocols, library services that meet the needs of our community. Total dollar amount of the grant is $18,002.
Any questions on this motion? It's great that we can take advantage of some of the money that we will be receiving from the American Rescue Plan Act. So it's great that our library can utilize it. So any questions or comments, go ahead and take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ours. Alright, motion carries, motion two.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, motion number two, I move to appropriate the $18,002 grant that received to the American Rescue Plan Act revenue account and the American Rescue Plan Act expense account, the special grants and donations fund.
Thank you, second on that, second. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ours. Alright, so moved.
Right, Carrie.
Thanks.
Tonight, number five is the Berlin Blue Collar contract. Denise Parsons, available to give you a brief background.
Hey Denise.
Hi there, how's everybody tonight?
Good. Apparently we're in a big hurry, so fuck that, I don't know.
So as it says in my agenda item, the agreement between the CILU expires at the end of this month. Back in January, we were notified that the union body had petitioned to change representation. They did have a vote in February and their new union is the Connecticut Association of Labor Unions, otherwise known as CALU, and they are the new representatives. In March, the Blue Collar Union President did approach the town asking if we would be interested in off-the-record conversations about a successor agreement. And when we do this, we save the fees associated with the attorneys through the negotiation process. So we were excited to go through that and avoid the cost of the labor council. We did have our, I had several meetings with the Blue Collar Union President and then once we got to a final draft, I met with both the Roche and Kevin Delaney to talk through the financials. We have a contract that we believe is a fair and good-for-the-town successor agreement. The highlights of the changes, we've added some language that would allow for modified work schedules for the Blue Collar staff. This isn't an automatic, they're gonna all be changing their work schedules, but what we learned through COVID is sometimes changing some of the ways we do business is beneficial. And the contract right now does prevent us from doing things like letting them work more than eight hours in one day without overtime or allowing them to skip their lunch break in order to modify the day. So this language will allow them to do those things with approval and recommendation by the department head. So we're just trying to get the contract prepared in case we want to move forward with any changes. We also adjusted the new hire vacation language and in doing so, we're removing the accrual payouts. Right now, our staff, when they separate service, they get a lump sum of their bank of vacation time plus an accrual of what they've earned to date. And those accruals have been sizable, so we're trying to get rid of that. So we have changed the vacation so that people are granted vacation upon hire and that would eliminate that payout at the other end. We've increased the meal allowance, they had a five, seven, ten, breakfast, lunch and dinner. We've made them all $10 just to try and keep up with the economic time so that they can actually afford to buy a breakfast with their meal allowance. We updated the seasonal employee language that was in the contract just to comply with statutory regulations. We added a 75 cent shift differential for employees who hold the Class A CDL. That impacts five employees. And we've gone with a wage proposal with the standard two and a quarter that we have been doing with the, all of the unions in the last several years. We're looking for a three-year successor agreement. We do believe this is in the best interest of the town.
Alright, thank you Denise.
You're welcome.
That summary and negotiations, though it's never easy.
Never easy.
Never easy, but alright. Appreciate our Blue Collar workers in Berlin here and they get a lot of the very tough work done around town, obviously. So take care of them as best we can. Questions for Denise, counsel? I, none. So with no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and the Connecticut Association of Labor Unions, number fifty-two, the Blue Collar's employees, the period of July first, 2021 through June thirtieth, 2024.
Second on that, again. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ours. Alright, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Denise.
Thank you Denise.
Denise.
Tonight, number six is a revaluation of bidder board. This is something that we are required to do every five years. Last year was completed in 2017. So there are our associates here to give you some background and.
So. If you don't.
Good, thanks.
I did a spreadsheet for the bits that came in. Three of them came in. And what I did different this time around was I put in to the RFP, the proposal, that pre-trials would be part of the contract. Last time we did that, they were, a pre-trial typically takes effect from litigation. You go to a pre-trial and you try to resolve issues and then if it does not get resolved, then you end up having a trial. Today, we've spent probably $48,000 to date on pre-trials and we're still not done. I'm projecting probably about $50,000, $55,000 when it's all said and done. Out of the three bits, one of them was, the high bit I didn't look at because it was $100,000 higher than the mid bit. And the low bit actually did not comply with the RFP. They didn't put in for pre-trial support. So I, I looked at who complied with the RFP and that was the middle bit of 189. That's where we stand right now. Another thing to keep in mind when we go to pre-trials, an MAI is a designation in the appraisal field. The court recognizes designation and the middle company actually has three MAIs. Two of them are, three of them are all partners in the, in the company. So when you're looking at qualifications and you're looking at complying with the bid, they actually, every which way possible.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks, Joe. Questions for Joe?
I just wanted to point out the reason why we're doing this, we have to do it every five years.
Every five years, the next, the next one is 2022. And then the next one after that is, five years after that, 2027. And that one will probably be a full physical revaluation and that will probably be about $400,000.
Yeah, nice, that's a lot of ways.
Yes.
Yeah, it's always a fun time.
Yeah.
You have fun with it, don't you?
Well, it's a lovely time.
Difficult job, but we, you know, we've got to do it, obviously, so. Any other questions for Joe? Is that, okay, thanks, go ahead and take a motion.
I will move to award the contract for 2022 property revaluation valuation to those qualified bidder, municipal valuation services LLC for a total cost of $189,900.
Thank you, second on that, second. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ours. Alright, motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Tonight, number seven is optimization of the town manager to submit housing, affordable housing plan technical system grant application. I'm only, I'm just going to see, give us a little background.
Yes, the, the state legislature now requires that each town prepare an affordable housing plan by June of 2022. And they're offering this grant to help cover the costs. It's competitive, but first come, first served, so we want to get in there early, $15,000. And we actually have, we're starting the update of the plan of conservation and development. And the, we submitted, we have issued an RFQ, we actually have interviewed consultants, but we're, what we're doing is we're combining the, the POCD update with the Affordable Housing Plan because I think it's gonna be more efficient to do it that way, have one consultant, one process, their related subjects. So that's the game plan and this item is just to authorize the town manager to request the grant.
Thanks, Jim. Is this a new, the Affordable Housing Plan, would you say, a new requirement?
New requirement.
Based upon a new statute? Or is that before then, is there something?
Yeah, it's a few, I, I think it's a couple of years old, I'm not exactly sure, but the, yes, it's a new statute that was passed a couple of years ago.
Questions, Jim? Good thing is that Berlin is very, you know, very forward-thinking with affordable housing and I don't know what changed in the current, there was some other, there's some other statute they just passed that had to do with packing zoning, but that's new. But there was a, the current state statute is, what, 10% of our housing should be affordable. I think we're about 9.3% and we have quite a few units, the next hopefully year or two, that will be coming online, that will be affordable. So we, we should reach that 10% under, under the current law. I don't know, I don't know if the other one changed it, did it change?
As long as it's at least that 10%.
It's a 10%, so. Yeah, okay, they may move it up, but under, under current statutes.
Current statutes, yeah.
Right, for years, we've had this statute and we strive to get there. And I think we're one of the few communities that, suburban towns that has almost reached it and that's, that speaks volumes for our community to try and have some affordable housing for people that, you know, can move in and enjoy Berlin, so. Alright, so if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the town manager to sign a grant application to administer Connecticut Department of Housing Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistant Grant in the amount of up to $15,000.
Second on that, again. Any other comments or questions?
Thanks, Jim, for keeping an eye out for this type of stuff, appreciate it.
My player.
Yes, Jim has always got his eye out for grants, yes.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that, that's part of his.
It's a project.
Job, but it's, it is a project, right? It's not easy, Jim, we know that, but we appreciate many, many grants you have brought to town with your, with your hard work. So here's another one, a list, which is great. Any comments from anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ours. Alright, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Tonight, number eight, purchase one Dodge Charger from Jengus CJD LLC of East Hartford. I think I get the license to, I'm gonna get the administrative services contract, Jim Simon's.
Good evening.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
Hi there, how's everybody? Joining us, Summer?
Good, yeah, so far.
So tonight.
So we had a police cruiser, an on-mark car that got in an accident at Mill Street and Main Street in East Berlin. That was a 2009 vehicle, but after we evaluated it and the insurance company evaluated it, it was deemed to be totaled and we are replacing that with a Dodge Charger, which is a few thousand dollars cheaper than what we would normally buy. And also will hopefully give our police department a different look when they're out doing their job.
Okay, because, right, normally we've been going SUVs, right?
Yeah, we, we usually stay with Ford and we usually stay with SUVs and they kind of look like police cars all over the place, so. So the on-mark car, hopefully it doesn't look like a police car.
Yeah, that's great, mix it up a little.
Yeah.
Now.
Yes. Jim, any reason why we're getting a Charger? Is it the price?
No, when we sat down, we looked at what we were gonna do, whether we're gonna probably replace it with another SUV or we were gonna replace it with a Chevy or a Dodge, what's out there. The Dodge seemed to be the better car, the cheaper car. Now, I won't say the better car, but it appeared that that would meet our needs the best. So it's, it's a Dodge, it doesn't have a Hemi in it, it's got a V6. So it's not gonna see the track anytime soon, but, but it should, it should work out pretty good for them.
It's too. No fun without the Hemi.
Yeah, I know.
But it's a Mopar, it's okay.
I don't know about that.
That officer didn't get hurt, right?
Our, our officer was transported to the hospital afterwards, but I do not believe he was injured. I think it was all precautionary.
Hey, Jim, generally, how much does it cost to outfit these vehicles?
Well, that, that depends on which type of vehicle it is. This vehicle being an undercover vehicle, it's a lot cheaper than if it was a marked patrol car. So what we have is we have installation of the radios and installation of warning devices, sirens and light system in there. And then it depends on the vehicle, this one will probably come in somewhere around $5,000 to outfit. If it was, if it was a marked patrol vehicle, that could be anywhere over $12,000. It's, they're quite costly.
Thanks.
Well, hopefully we can put this new vehicle to use to help us with the car theft problem in Berlin, legally, unfortunately, and all around the communities, right? We've been seeing that, I just, article today, right, Glastonbury had a situation, right, the other night with several vehicles that were stolen and then the occupants that stole it, I guess crashed one, got out, ran through the woods and, right, ordered up Uber to come pick them up when the police could catch them and then they stole the Uber guy's car. So and then I think they crashed that, I think they finally did get caught, right? Unfortunately, that's, you know, just in, in latest, you know, thing that organized criminal groups, they do appear to be unfortunately organized and using juveniles because the laws are a little bit, not as strict for juveniles at the moment. So, you know, that, that's terrible that, you know, people run in those organizations, take advantage of that, unfortunately, but that's, we're all kind of facing that and it's very difficult. But that's, we're all kind of facing that and it's very difficult, you know, to catch that, it's very random. But they are driving around town, I just, someone that I know, their neighbor, he saw at their neighbor's house, just, I think it was yesterday, up over on the, off Orchard Road somewhere, garage door was open, the other thing you guys have to, right, realize, keep your garage doors closed. This was during the day at 5 o'clock. Car back into the driveway, somebody got out with a hoodie on and a mask and went into the garage, trying to get the car open and they couldn't open the car, so they didn't, they didn't break in, so they kind of ran out, the neighbor. We saw it, called the other neighbor, but like, they didn't do anything, but this is 5:00 in the afternoon, so, and, you know, more rural part of town. So they're, they're everywhere, they're in every town, we coordinate a lot of our enforcement actions, right, with all the towns, surrounding towns and do the best we can, so maybe this will help sit somewhere where they don't, don't notice it as much and help our residents out a little bit better. Okay, any other questions for Jim? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the purchase of one Dodge Charger from January CJD LLC of East Hartford, Connecticut, for a amount not to exceed $27,480.80 utilizing the state of Connecticut G I S contract number 19PSX0161.
Second on that, second? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thanks Jim.
Thanks Jim.
Thank you.
Good Jim.
Good item number nine, to be prepared for G I S annual maintenance contract.
Good evening.
Hey Mike.
Nice. This is my annual request for New England Geo Systems to continue to maintain our geographic information systems, known as the G I S system, which is that nice map you go, you want to find out where your neighbors, you know, what their taxes are, or who owns what, where the parcel batteries are, where the weapons are, that type of thing. So they, actually they gave me a little bit of a stat update. Last year, we've had 12,000 users in 29,000 sessions, which is pretty impressive, so there's a lot of people using this. Their budget is $30,000, 6,000 of that is for, just for hosting and maintaining of the public and our staff websites. And they're, they also, we do a lot of work for the P O C D, chip and planning and zoning, they're actually working on stuff right now. So the, the remainder of that fee is for task assignments and also for the parcel updates for Joe. As far as boundary, ownership, and also some, some other mapping assignments. So $30,000 for, and we have this funded in our G I S programming account. And we're just asking to get this bid waiver for this year, so we can go through the next year and have them maintain it, also our public sites.
Okay, great, thanks Mike. Yeah, we might have been, had information on this before, so we're familiar with it, any questions for Mike? Okay, hearing none, go ahead and take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the bidding procedure and award a contract for G I S annual maintenance at departmental services to New England Geo Systems of Middletown, Connecticut, for a amount not to exceed $30,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that, second? Okay, any other comments or questions? Council, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks Mike.
Okay, on to appointments, I guess we have one, right? All right, so we'll go ahead and take a nomination.
Mr. Mayor, for the public building commission, I'll nominate Rockwell Gary, Cherry, sorry, I pronounce everyone. T B C.
Thanks for that nomination, and, and any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations and take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, so, so moved, welcome to public building commission, other, other volunteer steps forward. That's great. Town managers, oh, right, yeah, town managers.
Yeah, greeting again. So the first item that I have is a request from Cisco City to find the L B G D Q flag, the pride flag in front of town hall for the last day of June. And I'll bring it to the council, for your consideration.
We don't have any, I don't think we have any written policy now, right, on this, you know. Shame on us, but work on that, what do we think?
I would love to, absolutely love to. I had reached out to Rochelle last year about flying a pride flag during pride month, so I completely support that. See, I've all done quite frankly, but I certainly support flying it last week.
We have two flag bowls out there, one in the state of Connecticut, one with the United States flag, covers all our citizens. All of them are included. And to take one group and separate them, I think it's a negative for them, pointing at someone's air special. I think our citizens are covered by our flags, protected by the constitution, the flag represent. Government flag, what should be for government flags.
Who else? Um, it, it is an issue, I mean, you know, been asked before for different flags beside the pride flag. We don't have a policy. Typically, to kind of keep precedent, what, what we have done, you know, to recognize different members of the community, different groups is do proclamations from the council, that's kind of been what we've done, been the tradition here, as far as I've, as far as I've been here. I don't know many other flags that we have raised over town buildings. What I fear is certainly changing the precedent, because people have certainly asked in the past for, for different type flags. And I fear what we do for one, we are going to do for, have to do for all, which would be the only fair way. And Lord knows how many flags people would want us to fly for different, different reasons, different groups.
Mark, if I may ask, what other flags have we even asked to fly?
Was asked, well, years ago for the tea party flag, the tread on me flag. That was just kind of off the record, but I said.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
Do that. What's happened?
It's a political faction.
Yes, but once we open the floodgates, how do we say no? And it would, and we couldn't say no, I understand with the current case law. So the law on this issue says that flag polls or town property will go ahead and promulgate a, a policy going forward, because we should have had one by now, shame on us for not having one to town. Is that typically flag polls are reserved for government speech, which is the American flag, state flag, some service flags, town flag. It's not a public forum. And then some towns have policies with different flags, some towns have gotten in trouble with their policies, because they favor certain flags over other flags. Who's to say what's political and what's not today? Very tough to make that distinction, depending on what flag someone wants to fly. So I, I just, without a policy, I would be hesitant to do it. Because we, that has not been our precedent to do. Hence the proclamations for different groups, big boy scouts, girl scouts, you know, just many organizations, we try and recognize with the proclamation from the town council on the record in our meeting. So I would certainly rather wait and see if we could come up with some policy before we grant one and then open some door that we may not want to go down that road, unfortunately. It, it just happens to be this particular flag, but it could be, it could be anyone, you know, it could be any flag for any organization.
It's not an organization.
No, I understand what it is, it's a movement, I, I understand that too.
It's not a political faction or an organization, they're people. And, and, you know, with all due respect, Charlie, yes, the American flag is about everyone, but unfortunately, you know, there are those that are marginalized.
Many people are marginalized, many people are discriminated against for many different reasons. And we can't all have a flag that represents us.
Why not?
On our own, on our own property, on our own places of business, I encourage people.
Month, and they're asking to fly for one week.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
Is there another flag pole in town that doesn't fly over a town building, like the one in, like across from Walgreens? Or like, is there another flag pole?
Still town, still town property, and I, I mean, I, I'm not sure if this one has a statute, so, you know, our ordinance, so it's kind of flying by precedent, what we've done, you know, for now. And, you know, I mean, I, you know, I guess you can exempt one, maybe we could do that, that down the road. But again, I, I guess my biggest concern is that we exempt, let's say we pick any location, the town property, anywhere in town. Once one goes up, I don't know how I would turn down any other one, quite frankly, I, I mean, you know, depending, whatever it might be. That, that's, that's why it's a difficult issue.
Am I allowed to make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, sure. It really should be coming up, but yeah, you know what, you, you can announce from there, it's fine, because we can record it, just say your name again, I know, I know where you're.
That's okay, you guys can go first.
Yeah.
Steve Winok, 46 Thompson Road, Berlin, how you doing? I thought I'd seen POW MIA flags up.
That would be the service flags would be kind of covered under that Marine Corps, Army, Armed Forces.
Those are all.
And, and those are typically on the war memorials. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that would be the only one, I think, that, you're right, that probably has been up there. I don't know, I don't know about town hall, but I don't, I don't know if it's by a town hall or town property, I don't know, which is why I need to do some more research.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and then an ordinance would kind of fly in, you know, the dark, but.
I guess I'm a little disappointed as someone who was in New York City in 1972, one of the very first gay liberation marches, as it was called.
Yeah.
This is 50 years later, and I'm frankly shocked that this is not, just because when we say the pledge of allegiance, we talk about people with liberty and justice for all. That's what the pride flag represents, liberty and justice, and it's for all people. And I appreciate what you're saying about the US flag, I totally.
Please don't misunderstand me, I encourage people to fly the flag, whatever their idea is, and speak out on your own property, on your own businesses, their own cars. But the town hall, the government building shouldn't pick winners and losers, everyone has to be 100%.
It's not about winners and losers, it's about inclusivity.
I've been overweight all my life, I've been discriminated against.
That's not.
So what's going to be next, we're going to have the fact I fly next month? I mean, let's make sense, let's, let's treat everyone equal and the government has to maintain it.
Yes, sir.
So, sorry, I'm sorry, Mark Dalvali.
I'm Mark.
As far as precedent goes, I know we don't have any in town, because I assume this same argument maybe had been, or would have been used, I don't know if they've been brought.
Yeah.
But we can look to other towns, I know neighboring town, or, well, I've got another, neighboring towns that I know, or nearby towns who've done this, you know, I don't think, I think Miltown and I drove by and heard, neighboring towns, I haven't done the legwork to see exactly which towns, but I know that there are neighboring towns who've done, many towns neighboring who've done the same thing. And also literally the White House, 2015, June 26th, when it was legalized, literally the White House was adorned in the colors of the pride flag. Like, there's precedence for doing this in places that are not Berlin, Berlin has just not done it.
Agreed, I mean, I, I don't disagree with that statement, I, I just would like to get an ordinance, maybe we pick a spot, you know? And, and that would be the spot, would you come to that agreement? And so I'm just hesitant to open the door before we have any kind of guidance for people, because I, I think you came in and said, you know, right, I did the right thing, kind of came and said, how do I do this?
I presume there was going to be a forum and I filled it out.
Yeah, right, right, and, and actually Rochelle and I said, I said, do we have a forum, and we have some, and then, you know, sadly, we don't, so, sorry about that, you know.
One last comment, if it's okay, Danielle Morrissey Corsetti, 75 Pride Street, you said that this isn't specific about pride and it's not, you know, about this in particular, but I'm afraid that it's going to look like it's about this in particular, and it's going to look like a decline.
Yeah.
You know, a, a refusal to be accepting and welcoming, so.
Well, hence the proclamation tonight, those are our words, and then those are what we mean in Berlin, and that'll be posted at town hall, and that's.
It's not quite as visual.
No, no, I, I, no, I, I understand that, and let's face it, today's social media will make of it what they're going to make of it.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's with anything we do, any decision we make, tomorrow there'll be some people yelling at, buying a police car, you know, so I mean, just, that's what we deal with. Not to compare them, but I mean, that's just how it is, so, you know.
I hope we can make progress moving forward.
Yeah, I, I just, I, if we can get, you know, some policy and, and maybe a location that, that we can do it for different flags and just figure out what that, how, we have to describe them somehow, really, otherwise we would let somebody supposedly fly, I don't know, the communist flag, let's say, without any guidance in our ordinance? I mean, I, I don't, I'm not sure how I would say no to that too, well, it's, that's what they believe in, and I mean, it's not inclusive, but it's not the same thing, I understand.
It's a group.
Well, well, that, that's your, that's your definition, though.
No, no, it's not mine.
No, it's, but, but that's the definition of, of, of the pride flag, that's great, but, but there's 20,000 people in town that have different thoughts on things, you know, good and bad, I'm sure. And that's why it's better for us to have the same policy and ordinance in place and maybe a location with some, you know, we'll do a lot of homework, there's some definitions on what flags we can fly. That, that would be much safer as a town than to open the door and not have any guidance, you know, that's why.
It's disappointing, it's disappointing and it's exclusive.
Yeah, well, again, that's the proclamation is, obviously, we, we've, you know, proclaimed how we feel about it, right, as the, the town council, and I'm sure most of the town, you know, residents feel the same way, and that's why we do things like that, to recognize that movement. But again, we need, we just need policy, because I, I, I know, I, I know what will happen, and I think we, we know what will happen, and it'll be tough to say no to much without any kind of policy we could point to, you know, because who's to say what some other flag represents? Different people have different thoughts, too, have different flags, right, so it's very hard to be true at all. So, for, yeah, it's Mark.
Good question, so is there, and I'm sorry if I'm interrupting and you were about to.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Is there a plan to create such a?
Yes.
Such a policy?
Yeah, well, we'll have to, we'll have our, our town attorney do some research, you know, different towns have, I'm sure, policies and ordinances. As you mentioned, some may not have any, you know, we just, we gotta do some research, I mean, we really do that with anything that comes our way like this, you know, I mean, you know, this, I know this is that particular flag and that particular issue, but different issues come up like this all the time, and we gotta have something to point to, so everyone gets treated fairly when they, you know, fill out that application, or whatever they're asking for from the town, this happens to be what this is tonight, but it's across the board that way, you know. With us just making some, really, it is, it is a judgment call, we have to, okay, yeah, that's great, we, we agree with him, put it up, but next flag that comes in the door, maybe, maybe none of us agree with, but what do I say, no? That's just like a judgment call on, on, let's say, the council's part, which is great, but that's not, that, that's what leads to lawsuits and different problems. So if we have some type of definition that, you know, we think is, is fair to most flags, we, we, we might accept that, you know, we don't open the door to everything. It's just much better, sorry, I'm a lawyer too, so that, I like to have that thing, those things written down, and safer, I think, for all of us.
It's just tough, you're saying you can't say no, but you're saying no, the same time.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, we're, we're gonna, you know, put some policy in place, because I think we were, Rochelle and I were, like, we said, okay, where's the, is there an application? What, you know, and we had nothing, you know, we, we don't have anything, so.
Well, I appreciate you coming out and talking, it's not easy to do, but sometimes there's compromises. And, you know, one of the things I thought about was, you know, the town hall is kind of off the people path. But you mentioned over by one, we just call volunteer park, you have a gazebo, you have a sign, you've got a light, you've got a flag pole. Maybe that's the place where the community, it's more visible, right? Maybe that's the place we put it to our ordinance or policy, whatever we call it. That, that was my thoughts, you know, because some of the things that I've heard about over the last week, you know, sneaking out in the middle of the night and defacing monuments for people was probably the wrong way to know about this conversation, and I don't know who did this, but that was. was probably the wrong way to know about this conversation. And I don't know who did this, but that was wrong.
It's a little ironic because I called the town hall and then maybe an hour later got on Facebook and I was like, oh my gosh, like I really didn't know anything about what was happening over there first.
Several times, not just.
Many, many times, I feel, it really upset the veterans quite, quite a bit, yeah.
And I heard four times with the Facebook.
We've got the veterans monument, it's no business.
But not, no, not really.
It's not a museum.
No, 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 you, you went about, you went about it the right way. You called town hall and said, hey, how do we get this up? Yeah, so, and that's, we appreciate it.
And we certainly appreciate that. And we are definitely going to take a look at what we can do moving forward.
I want to thank you for coming tonight. I really do. And I'm not against any way. Don't take it the wrong way. And this is the beginning. It's not the, you've done a great thing and you're pointing out we need to look at this, so thank you.
My barn flies an Italian flag, just an FYI. The front yard has the American flag, but the backyard has my Italian.
How does that happen?
Why not? It's my property, right? I'm Italian.
Should be in a prom.
I know, for honest sake, yes, sir.
I only have one pole in the front.
So can we expect that by next year? How is it being placed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
This, this request came up again.
Yes, sure, yes.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Yeah, it should, I, I gotta hope it just take all year, although I think the government. Next year.
That'll be the next time this particular.
Yes, I know.
I've been working on the leash law for eight years.
Still working on a lot of it. No, 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 I just think we need, we need to do what we, you know, kind of the right thing for, for the town, for the benefit of the town government. So again, yeah, we certainly appreciate you coming out and, um, you know, we'll, we'll work on that and get something in place. So there will be a process. People won't have to sneak up in the middle of the night trying to put it up somewhere where it shouldn't be. And if we find that right spot for everyone, then that, that probably makes the most sense, friend, and you know, we find a spot, yeah.
And just one last thought. In terms of social media, I, I like to be very positive. I imagine posting like, you know, I, the town council agreed to move forward to find a policy, like we're going to work on this moving forward. Post, I took a picture of the proclamation, like posting that, like, I don't, I want Berlin to be proud of ourselves. Like I want to put us in a good light. I want people to be excited for what's coming next, not super cranky and.
Yes.
I mean, like you're saying, people will have their opinions, it's fine, but I.
A lot of people are super cranky these days, but like, it's not just.
I wanted to let you know that I will post in a positive light.
Uh, I wouldn't think you would. We thank, thank you for that. But you, you're here and you're, you're doing it the, the right way, I guess, you know, if there is a right way. So we certainly appreciate that. And we will, we will move on this and we'll get something in place. So it'll be easier and, you know, written down so you, people can read it and, and come forward and ask for different things. Yes.
Yeah, I was going to add, Council Spencer, last time, last year you had a question as to um, something explored. We call on the neighboring towns and around us and their response was the government did not put any flags out on their property, but encouraged private citizens and groups to display the pride flag and the colors. So I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, that's what they decided to do. On streets and etc., on private property.
Might be an interesting review. I certainly know, I could probably name fifteen towns that have blown it over town hall with a ceremony, Bloomfield, South Windsor, Manchester, Miltown.
Did it around here.
Yeah, I don't know if it's specifically by bordering, but.
I mean, you know, certainly, yeah, certainly would encourage stuff that, you know, residences, businesses, if people are so inclined and. Where, you know, to do it certainly, but. Um, so we'll task Mr. Denofrey out. If we don't give him enough work, our town attorney, uh, to, to look at some of the language, look at the different towns and, and, you know, bring that to, uh, I don't know, either a policy or I guess maybe ordinance might be the way to go or policy. County ordinance committee, county ordinance committee would be like a process. He'll give us some direction. We'll have an ordinance, many separate meeting, a few of the council members, figure out what it's going to be. And then we bring it back to the full council and, and it can take a vote and, and put that in place. So it'll take a little while, but not, you know, not, not, not a whole year.
Thank you.
I know the dog part, the unleashed people will say, no, no, not true. But that, that's proven to be a little bit more difficult issue, I think, this one will be. So, uh, yeah, we appreciate that. So thank you. We appreciate you, you coming here and talking to us because that's what, I think all of us up here, I always say to people in Berlin, you know, we want to hear, I mean, you know, we, we represent you, right? You voted us here to, on the town in the best interest of everyone in Berlin, so we try and do the best we can. So thank you. So we'll do that. We'll get that started. Joe can start doing some research for us and then we'll, at an upcoming ordinance committee, we'll start looking at that.
The ordinance committee meetings are public.
And they're public too. They're public too, yeah, of course.
The ideas too.
Well, yeah, if you, yeah, if you have thoughts, if you have any information, we've got some from our, you know, uh, regarding the leash law from many people that have, you know, different sides of the issue. Same with you. If you have any that you want to help us look at, you find an ordinance that looks good, send it to us as well. Through the Tommy Andrew, we'll look at that. Because it's, it's always hard gathering all that information, right? That's the hard part. And then kind of sit through it all, so, yeah, whatever you want to send to us, we're happy to, to look at it and figure it out. All right? Thank you very much. Okay.
I'm going to keep going.
Yes.
There are a couple of other.
You got more?
I totally, uh.
Goodnight, man. Goodnight.
Late night, thanks.
I know it's only ten thirty, we're still early.
Yep.
So you gotta, you can talk for another couple hours if you want.
I can do that.
No.
So just want to, um, you only know about this Rescue Plan Act. Towns are receiving money from the US Treasury. So we have two allocations from, from what is called a county allocation, which is about three point nine million dollars. And the town allocation will be over two million dollars, still about six million. First half, we should be getting any time, maybe it's already in the bank. And the second half will be in twenty twenty-two. So the US Treasury released a hundred and fifty page document that outlines the parameters and how these funds could be utilized. When I proposed that we do in September, that to have a joint meeting of the council and board of finance and Kimmy and I can sort of convince the hundred and fifty pages to, to, uh, and outline the parameters and how these funds would be spent, what the timeline is, the do's and don'ts. And then have a discussion after that about how we might more approach it. Because it, it's a lot, but we have time till twenty thousand twenty-six.
Wow.
So there's, you know, there is a long time, but let's get started in September, at least to talk about it.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So just some updates with the senior center that's opening, uh, so now for the fourth of July. You can be, probably know they've been having, you know, different teams, you know, bingo every Thursday, the parking lot, uh, outdoor events. You know, every month, there's laptop event that they do. It's a trivia contest, you know, walking club, book club, repiling house plans. Uh, there's also a lot of drive-throughs, there's one more drive-through, Father's Day, humans for that. So it, there's been fairly good participation. And currently since everybody's outdoors, um, haven't been too much of a demand to get invited. We want to try and open in a couple of weeks so that we can see them and get different groups to come in and, uh, do it safely. Most of them are, pretty much all of them are vaccinated.
We have a meeting, right, we have a meeting next, uh, the, the, the public meeting, right, is next week for the.
Yeah, this is the senior center community center.
Yeah, that's next.
That one is scheduled for June, June twenty-second and June thirtieth. At the, uh, auditorium of this. But, um, one of the seniors have requested because of the accessibility, you know, you can walk in.
Yeah, I know.
And we could have one at the senior center and we'll do it. So we're trying to coordinate with the, uh, perhaps sometime early in July. I will schedule the third meeting for the senior center community center so that those who, more people can participate and join and provide input project. Um, you know, they're doing these other one-on-one services, you know, pressure screening and push-up programs. But I, I think people are wanting to get to get in our person, so I think we can do it safely. Hudson Rack, uh, good news, you know, both summer camps will be starting soon, uh, twenty-second. And, um, then pools will be open. And the Department of Health also removed all the restrictions of, you know, add to, add the restrictions we had last year. So it's also be open and people will be, people will enjoy it. You do want to, um, you have an ordinance committee meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth of the, uh, leash ordinance that they might want to do, so, um, that'll be coming up on your ears and then the material sound.
Yeah, you know, I got, I got some good stuff set to me and some other parks, which I'll take it forward to you. I'll send it to you, maybe to, uh, you could send it to Janet. Downstate, it might, it might be worth looking at because, yeah, you know, because it's, you know, different information, different towns, how they're doing it, so.
Yeah, if you can get it to me.
Yeah, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Right. And then, um, in terms of the, uh, timberland, that we have the giant meeting of the commission and the council. And the next step is that they're working on a statement of need as discussed. And once they have it, we'll discuss, if you want to go with it, that.
Also be an updated statement of need.
Yeah, right. And I, I, I think we can also start with all the experts who came and spoke with us probably start to come up some ways that we can increase margins. You know, there are ways you can do it. Probably want to, want to agenda that together and go through it. Do a lot of the work ourselves and, you know, get some guidance and benchmarking information from Connecticut PGA. They are willing to help. Information is out there. You had a question about the Kensington Fire Department, there's a request at the parking lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, I put in touch with Public Works and, you know, this is up, they want to hear. They have not gone through appropriate permitting process with the, um, inland wetland. Need to go through that, so they want to get that done. So they went through the process and Jim Mobile and Mike, they're helping them out.
Oh, good.
Good, that's good to hear. So they're working.
So at least, um, at least they, they've had the right, right approvals before. I didn't even know this, you know, so for example, even what has passed and Christiana, did we move that project? It touches wetland. We have to still go through the permitting process even though it's an existing road. So that's what the statute says, so we're going to do that. You all had a handout that I sent, Kim McMillian, Library Director, thanks for reading it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Started on Monday, brings out a great ideas, energy, enthusiasm, and yeah, thrilled to have it. Towns will go, it should be fantastic. The next one is I want to probably try and schedule after the next meeting, our manager review.
The town manager review? Is that time already again, huh? Oh, yeah.
Shopping the town.
Yeah, all right. Sure.
What I, what I'll do is I'll give you the, uh, forms we created, take a picture so that you have time to, uh,
Yeah.
mark it up.
Good.
Lots of pens.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, that wraps it up?
That wraps it up, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone want to go further, Erosion? Um, council communications, what do we have, anyone? Time? Said it all already, I guess, probably a good thing. Okay, so we are on to our just acceptance of our last minutes. June first, twenty twenty-one. If everyone has reviewed them, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Hey, Mr. Vare, I'm making motion to second meeting minutes for June first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second?
Second.
Do you have any other comments or questions from the council? Are you not all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead. Okay, so any opposed? Okay, we're all set to pass that. And motion to adjourn? Take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Want to say longer? Yeah, all right, so, go with it. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Josh.
Here, guys. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you, Eros.
Bye, Kate.
Good night. I'm going to read this after my evening job.